I am.
Well, good evening and thanks for coming, everyone. We will start shortly as soon as the clock hits the magic hour. The clerk will put the clock on the screen for me so I can take note of it.
Mayor, the FTR clock is not working this evening, so unfortunately it won't display on this here in front of me. We do have it down at the bottom right on the computer screen.
Got it. It appears to be accurate. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for Monday, March 7, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer has also been excused. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Well, thank you very much. If you would please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, not just for our men and women serving overseas, but by and for the families and the folks struggling in Ukraine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We now turn to the Proclamations and Presentations portion of tonight's agenda. And first, we're pleased to declare the month of March as Red Cross Month. And for this, we have Daniel Worth, the Executive Director of the Red Cross Chapter, and I believe we have Justin Van Landerschut, Van Landerschut, the Community Leader, who will also join Councilmember Branstadter at the podium for the proclamation.
Well, it's certainly my pleasure to read this proclamation regarding the Red Cross and Red Cross Month. In my experiences, I was a beneficiary of services from the Red Cross in multiple ways during my career in the Army. That after I retired, I got a chance to do quite a bit of volunteer work as working on disaster relief and helping folks that were displaced by fires and other things with the with the local chapter. And I'm also had the fortunate experience to give blood and money and help others out to be able to go and do that.
Thank you.
So let me read this City of Lakewood proclamation. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Lakewood, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. And whereas residents of Lakewood have joined millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. Whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters, donating essential blood, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenge of military life, helping save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, and delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of Lakewood and works to prevent and alleviate human suffering, which is vital to strengthening our community's resistance. Whereas we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to make it." Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month and urges all residents to support its mission and join in the commitment to give back to the community. Proclaim this 7th day of March 2022. Jason Whalen, Mayor.
Dan?
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and other council members present. Thank you so much for taking some time at the beginning of your meeting to proclaim March as Red Cross Month. I do have to admit, this is the first time I've accepted one of these in person. And this is a new experience. You know, two years being behind the computer screen is very different. So thank you for this opportunity. I will, I do have a couple of items to highlight in here. One, I'm a resident of Lakewood, so thank you for allowing me to come to my own city council meeting, right? To accept this, it's quite the honor. Number two, you may have heard that we have an event coming up soon, the Heroes Breakfast, American Red Cross Heroes Breakfast. It's being hosted in a hybrid fashion this year, so you can attend in person. It's, it is Thursday, this Thursday, March 10, at 7:30 in the morning at the Embassy Suites in Seattle. So if you would like to make that drive in the early morning hours, you're welcome to do that. If not, you can also attend virtually and register at redcross.org/RCHeroes22. And then finally, I'd like to highlight that we are still in a pretty severe blood shortage. There's an extreme need for several blood types. We tend to, we like to have at least five days' worth of blood on the shelves. In some of our types, we have less than a full day's worth of blood on our shelves, which puts doctors who are doing elective surgeries and other types of surgeries into very difficult situations as to what they can perform, because we can't provide the blood. Red Cross, as you've heard, provides 40% of the nation's blood supply, so it is a significant amount. So if you can take time out of your day to find time to donate blood, please do that. Or if you know of someone that would like to host a blood drive, or if there's an interest in hosting that, please reach out to me and we can make the appropriate arrangements for that. Otherwise, I'll leave my comments at that and ask if there's any questions from the council.
Well, thank you. Any questions for our guests? Well, thank you for heading up to Red Cross and certainly for being a resident of Lakewood. I served on the board of the Red Cross locally for a number of years in the 90s, so I very much appreciate your mission and all that you do.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. A little round of applause. Next, we'll present a proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of Lakeview Light and Power. And if Mr. Bob Estrada, President, and Ellen Hart, Vice President, would join me at the podium. Well, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight. And I can do one of two things, but not both, because I have to take the mask down or the glasses fogged up. So I either can read it legibly or breathe. Whereas Lakeview Light and Power was incorporated on March 21, 1922, for the purpose of obtaining service for its members. And whereas Lakeview Light and Power's mission is providing reliable, low-cost power while focusing on superior customer service and a commitment to safety. And whereas Lakeview Light and Power continues the commitment of its founders to serve its members at the lowest possible cost by means of a reliable electrical distribution system. And whereas Lakeview Light and Power has 2,798 members and services over 10,000 meters with a 301 miles of distribution line. And whereas these past 100 years have seen significant progress in looking to the future by upgrading equipment and developing processes that enable residents to have the latest in electrical service technology, such as installing in 1968 underground electrical lines that's minimizing the possibility of loss of power during adverse weather. 1968 was a while ago, but I appreciate doing the work back then. And whereas these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts and hard work of Lakeview Light and Power professionals, who are linemen, meter repairmen, and construction and office staff, but responsible for keeping the lights on. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of residents greatly depends on its services. And whereas Lakeview Light and Power supports the community through its donations and volunteerism with organizations that help those in need. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of Lakeview Light and Power, and we urge all residents to join us in recognizing the organization's essential service to this community. Proclaim this 7th day of March 2022. Jason Whalen, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for the organization's breadth and depth in this community and 100 years of service.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. You guys want to say a few things? Bob?
I will say a few things, Bob. Thank you. And I too must either take off this or hand put on this, one or the other, and I'll follow your lead there. Okay. Mayor Whalen and members of the City Council, as President of the Lakeview Light and Power Board, I'd like to thank you for the recognition this evening. But there are a few other folks that we would also like to thank, like those far-sighted residents and citizens of Lakewood who 100 years ago founded Lakeview Light and Power. Sure, they had a vision of how far we would go, and I'm sure they would be pleased as to how far we have gone. And we also must thank, as we have in our proclamation, many employees of Lakeview Light and Power, the men, women, both past and present, who worked quite hard and have succeeded in keeping the lights on, as we have indicated in our proclamation, and even in the most difficult times. We, Lakeview, look forward to serving the citizens of Lakewood for another 100 years. And we thank you very much.
Congratulations. Want to take a photo with all the councilmembers in the front? Gentlemen, do you like that? Since the 100th anniversary is kind of a, it only happens once every 100 years. Yeah, why don't we come on down the front? Well, thank you very much for some indulgence in taking a photograph. It is an incredible day when we have an organization that has celebrated its 100th anniversary here in Lakewood, so that's tremendous. And thank you for coming tonight. Next, we have an update from the Living Access Support Alliance with Jan Hutchins, its Executive Director. Jan?
Thank you. And I apologize, we were talking in school, but we're arranging with the Red Cross to do a blood drive, so you'll be all beginning an invitation once we get that date. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for inviting us here to do a presentation, give you an update as to where we are with the improvements on our Client Services Center. And thanks to Brianna for being the PowerPoint helper. In a few minutes, I'm going to introduce Wynne Stewart, who's with me today. She is an intern from the University of Washington School of Social Work, and explain what she's tagging along for. So as you know, LASSA is a community, our mission is really changed a little bit over the years. The wording has changed. The heart of what we do has not changed. We've always been about prevention. We're twofold. We're about preventing homelessness to begin with, and that's done with utility assistance, rental assistance, that sort of thing, and preventing recurrent homelessness through our housing programs. So could you give me the next slide? Thank you. And so we're going to talk just briefly about where we are, and then most of the time about where we're going. So the next slide. This is the early years. That's a white Saturn on top. I worked out of the back of my car for, worked in the front and the trunk and all around my car for a lot of years. There's some, there's some stairs to a basement, St. Francis Cabrini, we worked out of that. That little red house on 99th Street, which I looked up today and is going for $450,000, which kills me, but that was, we thought we had died and gone to heaven when we managed to purchase that. Then you see the house in the right-hand corner, chiropractor's office. Six, seven years ago, we managed to move into this beautiful green and blue Seahawks-colored building, and a lot of the help putting that deal together, I have to thank Jeff Gumm, I have to thank the City of Lakewood, lent us money, gave us money, gave us some expertise as well. So that's where we've come from. The green building you can see is where we're at now, in the next slide. So our programs, I think most of you know a little bit about us, not going to go into too much detail. We house typically about 75 families a year, the next slide. And we also have prevention services. We've won different awards for some of the services that we've done. The bottom right-hand corner, and you can do that, next slide, is our Housing Heroes Award that we got in 2020. We managed to get into the office. We had a flood in the office. We had to close the office down. We rented a house. We kept working, and we got prevention rental assistance out the door for the cities of Lakewood, Tacoma, and Five, and worked with 690 households. So the next slide. And we have five different types of housing. We have the emergency shelter, the permanent supportive housing, which is part of Prairie Oaks, which is where our Client Services Center is. And I get asked a lot what type of housing that is. So I do want to say it is permanent housing, and once a family moves in, they can stay there. The family has to have, the head of household has to have a disability, and they have to have been chronically homeless or homeless for a year. The next slide. We also offer permanent housing with supportive services, very similar sounding title, but lots of difference in the mandates of what we must do and who we can take and so on. And then we also have affordable housing and rapid rehousing. And the next slide. Okay, so now where are we going? Go ahead. What we did was we broke our, what we wanted to see our Client Services Center look like in 20 years, and then, you know, in 10 years and in five years. And we came up with phases and broke it into several phases. The first phase was completed in 2016, when we opened up our Client Services Center and the 15 units of permanent supportive housing. Part of that was supposed to have a shower and at least one washer and dryer. We ran out of space. We ran out of money. Couldn't do it. But that housing did win an award from the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium because it was innovative to bring both of the housing authorities together. So next. Now we're getting into Phase Two, and I would like to show you, Wynne, if you could just, Wynne is going to show that around. Those are the permit drawings, and we've gone into a permit process. And then you can just take a quick look at that, and then I did make a copy for everyone to have one page of the floor plan. And as I said, we've gone into the, we're moving full speed ahead. And at this point, I would like to introduce Wynne and have her talk about what she's been doing for the last couple of months. Wynne?
Thank you for having us here. So Jan sent me on a mission to tour different facilities in the area that offer the shower and laundry services that we will be offering soon. And the mission was to basically look at construction, all the way to soaps offered, to procedures. And the thoughts were, we wanted to circumvent as many problems as possible before we built, and then also look at, you know, policies and procedures for operational purposes. So I was really struck by the stories that I heard in the different facilities. It really shows me that this is an important service that we're going to be providing to our community. And I heard stories of schoolchildren being able to bathe, so they weren't teased anymore at school. A woman that was living in her car that would go in and shower before work. A gentleman that's a homeless veteran that, you know, was using the mobile services that are offered through through one of the agencies. So all sorts of different folks really needing this service. And now I'm currently working on the policies and procedures so that we, you know, have something in place before we open. So I think we're open for questions.
I think we'll take the questions at the, and if you could. So Wynne is also going to hand out the floor plan, and I will tell you what, oh, you got it. Okay, great. So in green, what you have is a new to the building multipurpose room. And that is going to be a warming and a cooling, well, it's not going to be a warming and cooling center. It's going to be classroom and boardroom and so on, and, when needed, a warming and cooling center. Then in orange and pink, you'll see a space that is currently in the building. It's been a big empty space for storage. And there's washers and dryers as well as showers in that particular space. So then what's the next phase? The next phase is Phase Three. And if you can take a look on the PowerPoint, you can also, if you've got this page right here, it shows you the land that that we have purchased. A lot of help from the City of Lakewood to get that. We have three different lots. Together, they are one and a half acres. And what can you do with one and a half acres? Well, with the right type of zoning, you can put 50 units of housing on it. So what we wanted to do is break this into two different phases, put in 25 to 28 units of low-income and affordable housing, and next slide. And then Phase Four, more housing and a low-cost daycare, because it's not enough to have the housing if people, if we want people to be able to move into the housing, improve their income and move on, then they're going to have to have some sort of education. They're going to have to have childcare. And so childcare is part of that. So the next slide. And those are our phases, but we want to keep dreaming. So the next slide, please. So what else are we thinking about? Well, going green. And it's not just a pipe dream. We are working with a nonprofit in Olympia, and what they're doing is they, it's their mission to see nonprofits like ours have solar panels on their housing. So as of September of this coming year, they feel that they'll have raised enough money to be able to take our Flood Meadows project and put some solar panels up. It's meeting their mission. It's cutting our costs. Win-win. Good for the environment. And then that last picture is, okay, this is great. You're going to have laundry, but I live five miles, 10 miles away. I can see me bringing a load of laundry, but should I spend an hour on the bus to get to you? Well, how about if we try to go to them, too? So that is a long-term goal. And the next slide, please? Okay, so this is where I almost tear up, because I came in front of this group when I first started with LASSA, which is, I always have to remember the year. I just have to look at the City of Lakewood emblem. It's 1996, and that's when I started. And you gave us a modest grant, which was a huge grant. It was $15,000. What it did was it enabled us to hire a part-time case manager, which enabled me to run around and do some administrative stuff and start working at trying to grow us. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for the loan, the gifts to open our Client Services Center, walking us through the process of applying to the state to build onto our Client Services Center, for not laughing, at least to my face, when we talked about things that we wanted to do, to always working and partner with us. And thank you for your continued support. And happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Jan, very much. Any questions from members of the council? Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you for coming tonight and talking to us about reminding us of the history as well as providing us a vision for the future. I think it is, I've always been really appreciative of the fact that LASSA has been the in-town partner that has been at the forefront of dealing with preventing homelessness as well as preventing recurring homelessness, which is probably where the greatest long-term benefit can be, can be made. It's, I think, you catch people at times when they're open to help, and that's, that's very important. I, I had a question, because I've been, it's been, it's been a while, but could you, could you go over the makeup of your board and your governance system?
You might not be happy to send that to you. So we really enjoy a pretty diverse board. Pretty, you know, 50%, half women, half men. We could use a few younger people. We have a couple now. I've been accused of chasing, my daughter says, "Don't ask them to be on your board." But I will, trying to think in terms of the future, because we are graying out, so to speak. We're about 40% people of color, people with disabilities, people with We're about 40% people of color, people with disabilities, people with lived experiences. And that's very valuable. In fact, he's one of our youngest people. And he said, why do you want me on your board? And I said, you're smart. And he said, but I'm not offering anything. And I said, well, first of all, you are offering something. And secondly, just sit there then and pick up through osmosis how to run a board. And maybe Wassa is not going to benefit from all your wisdom, although I think we will. But somebody else will down, down the pike because we need to grow these leaders. So we are mostly Lakewood. So when, to me, diversity is also pulling people in from as far away as Puyallup, so to speak. We're always looking for an attorney. For some reason, real estate agents love us. I guess housing and housing, I guess. But we're looking for a diversity of, you know, what I really like is somebody who's brave, who says, this isn't a big enough plan. Let's go further. As opposed to, woo, are we sure that we can do this? Yes, we can do it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. It does. Thank you. I mean, I'm glad to hear about the diversity and that your, your board is evolving and is serving your needs. So that's, your needs are served. The community's needs are being served.
Okay. And then you said something that was very important and you, that's key. You said that we can help people who are open to help. And that is true. You do have to be open to help. And by keeping people permanently housed, we have people who create problems. And that's, and by opening up the shower and laundry, we realize that we're going to be attracting people who need the services, but also people who may not be really great at following rules. And that's why she's out there beating the bushes, trying to figure out what problems we may have before we experience them and being able, because, and being able to come up with policies that are going to help us through that. Any more questions?
I have a couple of quick questions. So the area on green, is that existing facility or to be built?
That's new. There is a Gary Oak right next to it. Or it would have been a little bit further down. Trying to preserve that.
So that's new area?
That's new, yes.
Fantastic. Okay. And then the orange and pink is internal reconfiguration?
Correct.
Got it. And I, I think, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, you're coming to visit us on Saturday during the retreat for, no, you're not. So I will ask you this question then. So you guys do a fantastic job with what you're doing and your, your mission focus, but since you're an expert. So any thoughts for us on, on what we may have to do for the emergency shelter type housing? When the Aspen Court opportunity goes away in a year, a year and a half?
So when, okay, so when the hotel that has been turned into the emergency shelter, what should we do? I think that's a great question and I think it deserves more thought than, my brain is like so full of just getting here tonight. Because as lovely as you all are, I still get nervous coming here. And I do think that we probably need a small configuration of shelter. I will tell you one thing that I have concerns about. And one of the questions that you didn't ask that I was thinking you might ask is, why not just go for 50 units of housing right now? Because it's cheaper to build all at once, economy of scale and so on. And my reason is because if we go for tax credits, then we may have to, it, it may control who we can house. And I find that I am really dedicated to trying to give people a helping hand. If, and I want them to be able to want to help them themselves. So I don't think massive structures of housing is the way to go. I think it's smaller, scattered site, a little bit of housing here and a little bit of housing there, which goes against what I just said by putting 50 units in. But that's why we're advocating for low income affordable housing as opposed to, let's have 50 units of emergency shelter. Because to me, that's, I, I have issues with that. So I would be happy to be thinking about that and knock on your door if we come up with some answers.
Looking for, you know, global solutions on the housing issue on the emergency side, all the way up to the permanent supportive housing side and, and more, we call it more and better, low income housing within the city of Lakewood, so.
So in one last thought is that we've had people in emergency shelter and they can't move on because there's no one, no place to move on to. And this type of housing.
Will be that next step.
It's going to help a little bit. But of course, we need a lot more. Thank you all for your time. Thanks for listening.
Well, thank you so much for coming. It's great to see you and great to meet you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That wasn't the last thing. One last, last thing. We do have a drone video that I tried to attach to this and I couldn't. And it shows our land, so I will send that to Brian and maybe she could send it out. And it gives you a bird's eye view of the land.
That's great. Fantastic. Well, thank you. Next, we have our youth council report. And I believe Mr. Jones is going to be virtual. Is that correct? Ms. Schumacher?
Mayor Hank Jones will be joining us virtually.
Fantastic.
Hello?
Hello, Hank?
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm at home today, but I am so glad to see you all back in the building. A very nice change of pace. So I'm here today to share what the youth council did at our monthly meeting earlier today. Firstly, we heard from our city council liaison, Councilman Branstad, about a number of things. But also that the council plans to meet soon to talk about ways to address homelessness in the city. We had the opportunity to ask questions about the city's intention and addressing homelessness in the long term. Next, we spoke with Suzanne Pack from the Korean Women's Association. We became a lot more acquainted with the KWA and she wanted to tell us about two programs that they were starting. The first was called WAY, or Work Advising Youth, meant to provide support, training and education to at-risk youth who are not fully engaged in our educational system. The second program was called Teens for Destiny, another Zoom program where students can have social and emotional support and learn valuable leadership skills. According to Ms. Pack, conversations often revolve around equity and social justice with a let's have a conversation attitude. It lets teens have a safe space to talk about issues that are important to them. And at this meeting, we spoke about ways that we could spread the news about these organizations in our schools and get in touch with friends who may be interested in these programs. We wrapped up our meeting by talking about our plans for the youth summit once again. Since the last meeting, we have decided on a definitive date and time. So mark your calendars for May 24th from 11:00 to 4:00. This event coincides with the Lakewood Dancing in the Streets event also being held on that evening. We are also very close on deciding on a venue. And Shannon and Cameron will be touring Harrison Prep tomorrow as a potential venue. We're also focusing on creating content for the event and contacting keynote speakers. Youth Council created a subcommittee for the summit and we will be meeting every Thursday online to hammer out all of the remaining details as that date creeps closer. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Are any questions from members of the council from Mr. Jones? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. And I just want to note, the council does know that you're participating as an appointed member of the Ant Hawk Tree Committee. I just want to applaud you and your efforts for doing that. It's, it's fantastic to have you onboard that committee.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Well, if there's nothing further from Mr. Jones, I'll let him get back to his homework. Study hard.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care. And next, we have the Clover Park School District Report. Mr. Wagaman, Director Wagaman is unavailable tonight to provide remarks. I believe we received written remarks in advance of tonight's meeting from Mr. Wagaman and the school district board. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
Fantastic. Very good. So now we will move to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. As folks know, public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual comment in this virtual environment. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, B Schumacher, B S H U M A C H E R at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. And we'll ask the clerk to read the names of those who have provided and submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we, we received comment in advance from Raymond Sumpty Jr. It was provided to the city council via email.
Thank you. And I did receive that. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. If you'd like to provide your comments virtually, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the dial number at 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number that appears on the screen. Or visit zoom.us and again, enter the meeting ID number that appears on the screen. You're listening in audibly. The ID number is 868-7263-2373. And please use the raise your hand feature. So we will now call on those who have signed in to speak in person. Any members of the audience here to address the council during this public comment period? Please approach the podium. If not, we will then turn to the Zoom attendees to see if we have those who wish to make virtual comment tonight. And I don't have the magic wand.
So Mayor, we received no, no one has signed in this evening in person to provide comments.
Correct. Thank you. You can turn on my attendee list. Very good. And I will call them as they appear from top of screen down. First, we have Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Haugen.
Oh, I feel like I'm looking backward a couple of years. I mean, we haven't worn masks here in this number since almost two years ago. Of course, that was after it was proven that masks didn't have that much effect on, on the China virus. But anyway, it's interesting to me. You're talking about homeless. Three things you're going to have to do to reduce homeless. You'll never get rid of it completely. One of them is us, an audit to make sure that the EBT card or debit cards or whatever are used are not being used to buy drugs. Secondly, make sure that the borders get closed. And your help in that is make sure you get rid of the sanctuary city option. And number three, education is important. You know, sometime back, it's about, getting almost three years ago, a higher up in education in Seattle with a PhD said that math is racist. It's be, and I think there's a strong feeling across the country that maybe the monolithic setup of way schools are run, don't feel that math is important. And of course, you'll never be able to solve your many problems if you don't reach out and get people educated. And that means math. You currently have a real mess when it comes to supply chain. You got trucks all over the place because your back and forth regulations, you, you've caused all kinds of problems which will affect you economically over the long term. And you'll never, you'll never get your problem solved unless you make certain that a higher percentage of your students can understand math and understand how the government works. You know, golly, you think Lakewood from hearing, the only issue is Gary Oaks. Gary Oaks, Gary Oaks, Gary Oaks. Well, those trees belong to somebody and all I can say is, go buy them or offer the rights to preserve the trees. That's the way it should be done. Anyway, good luck. Talk to you later.
Thank you. Next, Christina Manetti.
Hello, you can hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening. First of all, we have to correct the misinformation or disinformation that was presented by the previous speaker. Obviously, if he likes and understands math, then he should probably also understand that clearly masks do prevent the transmission of disease. That's obvious. I don't think that we have to argue about that. But this evening, I, I would like to ask your immediate attention on tree preservation and civil defense preparedness. At least two more Gary Oaks were cut down in my neighborhood, which is also Mayor Wayland's neighborhood. Since the last city council meeting, both on Meadow, an exceptionally large multi-trunked one and a large one with beautiful graceful branches. I told Mr. Wayland about these latest victims and suggested to him that the moratorium we talked about earlier be imposed after all to prevent more from being cut down before interim legislation can be introduced prior to the implementation of new amendments about half a year from now. He answered tersely, quote, "We are not entertaining any moratorium consideration for the reasons discussed at length during the open public council meetings," end quote. "I nevertheless felt it would be appropriate to impose a moratorium and I would like to urge the rest of the city council members to reconsider taking this judicious step if you are serious about protecting Lakewood's trees." A similar sentiment to Mayor Wayland's was expressed in the most recent Lakewood magazine where we read, quote, "Tree protection, protections and property rights. Property rights owners should be aware of potential revisions to the tree preservation code. These may affect your ability to modify or remove trees on your property," end quote. Basically, this is sounding the alarm. Quick, cut them down while you still can. While obviously people should be aware of what's happening in the city, the tone of this announcement seems intended to encourage people to take preemptive tree getting action. Please phrase your announcements more carefully in the future. Such slips undermine your sincerity. "The world has changed dramatically since we last met. The frightening new situation raises questions about how prepared we are in Lakewood for the eventuality of a nuclear war, since we are here right next to a major target. I never hear any sirens being tested, as they used to be monthly, I believe, in Slovakia when I lived there. I've never received any information from the city about what to do in the event of a nuclear attack. I suppose it being America, no one wants to upset people. Sometimes people need to be upset. I find myself thinking about where to shelter, what to prepare. I suspect virtually no one in Lakewood is ready for this terrifying prospect. I ask the city to prepare and to help its citizens prepare by drawing up public education materials and earnestly making an effort to actually make sure people understand and take action." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlop, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Dunlop and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to comment, like Christina Manetti, on the threat of nuclear war. I suspect that anyone under the age of 40 has no memory of what it is like to live under the threat of nuclear annihilation. And I believe the city of Lakewood has never had to make contingencies for a nuclear attack. Though, I am told that at one stage, before incorporation, the library basement was designated as a fallout shelter. Yet, we live next to the fourth largest military base in the US. As the city proudly acknowledges, JBLM is home to the 62nd airlift wing, which is the only wing in the Department of Defense tasked to airlift nuclear weapons and materials. This means that Russia has a warhead which has Lakewood's name on it. Assuming it is a single 300 kiloton airburst exploding over JBLM, equivalent to almost 30 Hiroshimas, the luckiest Lakewood residents will be those killed instantly. Others will be left with third degree burns and radiation sickness. In fact, looking at a map, I reckon only two council members have any realistic chance of surviving the blast unscathed, provided the port of Tacoma isn't also targeted. So what should the city do? Leaflets should be sent to every address, as Christina suggested, telling us about the danger we are in and what steps we can take to give us some small chance of surviving. This sounds a waste of time, but if people are chance of surviving. This sounds a waste of time, but if people are made to be genuinely afraid, they can lobby their politicians to deescalate the crisis. Remember, when Americans saw the movie The Day After in the early 1980s about a nuclear attack on Kansas, it started a public debate and had an influence on Reagan's negotiations with Gorbachev. Another step Lakewood might consider is taking a stand against the Russophobia that is gripping the Western world. The city should have the courage to reach out to a Russian city, which is also close to a large military base, and discuss a twinning arrangement. Because from a moral point of view, any action, however small, that might conceivably reduce the tension between the US and Russia is worth doing. That way, if the worst happens, you'll know you did your best. Thank you.
Next, we have Dosare Farmacus.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dosare Farmacus. I am a Pullman resident. I'm Minister of Information of the Panther Party of Washington. And today, I want to talk about a comment that was made at last, last week's session, last session, when we were open for comments. And that was that the point of the government is to protect property and people. And I want to make the point, I want to make this very clear to everyone right now. You cannot protect property and people. And the reason is that private property, as we understand it, is a form of violence. It's a form of extreme violence. When we talk about the destruction of the Gary Oaks, that is something that's happening because of private property. When we talk about homelessness, that's something that's been discussed a lot tonight. That's because of private property. When we talk about war, private property. Now, you can like this or not, but the fact is, all of these things exist because a long time ago, it was decided that some people got, got to own things, and the vast majority of the rest of us did not. It is violence to say that if you do not have money, you don't get, get control over the natural world, the natural world that every animal is born with a certain right to. Okay? When humans came into this world, they did not have people who could tell them where they could harvest food from the land if they were hungry, where they could sleep if they were tired. But it was determined, the world was carved up into private property through extreme violence. So the violence that happens when we throw a brick, when a window is broken, whatever small act of violence you might think that has, we can tolerate in the face of the incredible existential violence to all of us that is private property. You talk about, you know, the, the people of Ukraine, and they're suffering, and I feel for them. My heart breaks for them. But it also, my heart also breaks for the people of Iraq and Afghanistan. Maybe Putin's going into, going into Ukraine based on lies. He is. We went into Iraq based on lies. And I don't think anyone here was, was ready, anyone on the council was ready to say, tonight, let's take a moment and think about all the people whose lives were ruined by that. Because that was done for the enrichment of private property, of American private property, because once again, private property is violence. Libya, Libya had the highest standard of living of any country in Africa until we bombed it, until NATO bombed it into oblivion. And you know why we did that? Because they wouldn't play ball with private property. Wouldn't play ball with international banking corporations. They nationalized housing. We will end housing. You know how, and homelessness, you know how we end homelessness? We abolish private property. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Buncha Carter.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's good. All right. Well, my name is Buncha Carter. I'm the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington, and I am a Lakewood resident. I don't know, man. I've, I felt a little trepidation in your voice when you said my name. That troubles me just a little.
Don't be troubled.
I kind of understand why. I did want to say, under normal circumstances, we come in and, you know, the first thing that comes out of my mouth. I, but I do want you to know that I did hear you, Mr. Mayor. I did hear you. I read, I read your email, and I understood exactly what you said. And I know that the outcome of the Said Joaquin case is no longer on the lap of the Lakewood City Council. And that's cool. I already know who to apply pressure to on that. We are already in the process of doing so. But the reason why, we make sure that those letters and emails go to you, as well as your deputy mayor, so that you understand. And not only do we have an eye on what's going on, we're very well, very well aware of what's going on, but we want to make sure that there's not another Said Joaquin that y'all could sweep under the rug. That's the one thing I want to prevent, if at all possible. Yes. Yeah, have a good night. No, I'm not done. I was talking to people at my job. But anyway, so let's get something very simple out in the open. The Gary Oaks are endangered. It sounds like you may actually be making some moves in the direction of doing something about the housing situation, but my comrade Doc was very right. Abolishing private property is the only way to do away with houses. And of course, America won't do that, because ownership is such a big part of what makes America America. If you don't own anything, you have no value, which would explain why Said Joaquin, Elena Thomas, and Spencer Bellamy take place in a place like this. Because their lives have no value, because they own nothing, nothing but their melanin and their pain. Now, what does that exactly mean to you all? Probably nothing. But when it's all said and done, all that you have to remember is the only thing giving your position and your so-called authority, any validation, is the people who vote for you. The people who are out here suffering in the streets. The people who still have to punch a clock and go to work every day. And if they miss a day, they're afraid that they may be amongst the houses the next week. Living check to check is not, is not a type of reality that anyone should be facing. Doc, you were absolutely right. It's violent. It's violent. And that's why a lot of times we respond the way we do. And that's not violence. It's self-defense. Self-defense is common sense. I would have to be an idiot to allow your conditions that you put in place in this country that are based around ownership and other things that I have no grasp on to define my life. That is violent, and I will defend myself at all costs. Justice for Said Joaquin and all power to the people.
Those are the only individuals I see with their hands raised to address council during this public comment period. Are there any other individuals who wish to address the council during the public comment period, either in person or virtually? Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. Next, we'll turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February 14th, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February 22nd, 2022. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,890,144.27 for the period of January 15th, 2022 through February 16th, 2022. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,217,244.96 for the period of January 16th, 2022 through February 15th, 2022. E, motion number 2022-18, authorizing the award of a construction contract with RS Underground, Inc., in the amount of $231,953.70 for the American Lake Park Overflow Parking Lot Project. F, motion number 2022-19, authorizing the award of a construction contract with RS Underground, Inc., in the amount of $65,382 for the 59th Ave Sidewalk Project. G, motion number 2022-20, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Horwath Law for Public Defense Services. H, motion number 2022-21, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Lakewood Water District for construction of a water main along Washington Boulevard and Vernon Avenue in conjunction with the JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase Two. And I, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of January 27th, 2022.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda as presented? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? It's been moved by Councilmember Brandsetter and seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Unfinished business. Mr. Coffield, do we have any unfinished business to attend to?
There is none, Mayor.
We now turn to new business. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2022-22, appointing Jesse Black and Denise Nicole Franklin to serve on the Tree Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you very much. I believe the individuals had identification in the packets. The ad hoc tree committee, subcommittee of the council did their work. I'll perhaps give Mr. Bokey the opportunity to make comment, and then I'll ask for motion to approve motion 2022-22. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, these two individuals, I remember, one of our goals was, in, in the 13-member committee, was to have two from the CDBG eligible census tracts. And so both these cases, and I'll note, it's a very interesting, Denise Nicole is actually a former youth council member, and is a homeowner in the Tillicum neighborhood, and actively involved in a number of, of different things. And then Mr. Jesse Black is, lives in the Springbrook neighborhood. He also works with Lhasa and Springbrook Connections. So very touches a lot of different bases, I think, and understands the housing situation in that neighborhood and overall. And so I think both these individuals have done a very nice job on this committee.
Thank you very much. As I believe I read both of the applications, they were very strong applications. And I do note Ms. Franklin is a private property owner in the Tillicum neighborhood and is a former youth council member and is standing up to serve the city.
Yes.
Any discussion or questions of Mr. Bokey? Do I have a motion to adopt motion 2022-22?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Brandsetter that we adopt motion number 2022-22. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion number 2022-22 has been adopted, and we welcome Jesse Black and Denise Franklin to serve on the Ad-Hoc Tree Advisory Committee. We now turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. A few updates here. First is on, on Thursday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m., Alliance Northwest is going to be holding an event. The purpose of the event, it's a virtual event, is to provide contractors ways to be able to access local government contracts, state contracts, as well as federal contracts. That also includes military contracts at JBLM. This is something that they do on an annual basis. Our very own mayor will be part of, providing a welcome as part of the Pierce County Procurement Panel. In addition, our Economic Development Manager, Becky Newton, will be participating on two panels, a construction panel as well as doing business with JBLM. And then also, our SSMCP Program Manager, Bill Adamson, will also be a part of the Doing Business with JBLM panel. And if any of you would like to participate in the virtual event, please let myself or the city clerk know. We do have a virtual booth where city representatives can participate and, and take advantage of this event. There's a great number of speakers and events as a part of this. And I know earlier today, I sent you a link to the event, so if you have a chance, you should take a, take a look at it. And great speakers at the local, state, and federal level, including our own Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland will be speaking as well. The Lakewood Connections Magazine, yeah, they had reported, had been completed, and it's in the process of being mailed out to all addresses and here, here in the city. And it's also available on, on, on the city's, on the city's website. The police department began its body worn camera pilot program last week. This is going to last 90 days. It's an opportunity for us to be able to test the equipment and work through any needed adjustments before we go and take all the program to all police officers later this year. A total of 15 officers have volunteered to work the equipment. And again, that kicked off last week, so we'll, we'll have this pilot program in place for the next 90 days or so. And then again, we'll roll it out to all officers, and all officers will have cameras by the end of the, by the end of the year. About a week and a half ago, or maybe it's two weeks now, Pierce County, I'm sorry, Pierce College reached out to us. And this has to do with the Fort Sillicum Park turf in fields projects. And if you recall, the college would like to partner with us to help refurbish one of the fields for their baseball team. And so their financial contribution was 1.6 million. However, they would like to now contribute almost four and a half million dollars, an increase of 2.8, 2.9 million dollars. And the purpose of this is, not only do they want to have that ball field, to have turf in field, just like the other four will, but also to install outfield turf, add ball field lighting, and all the electrical upgrades that would be necessary with that, as well as other proposed improvements such as dugouts, press box, and even a batting, batting facility. Given that this is a change and new to what's been presented to the council in the past, what we're doing right now is we're gathering some information, including some renderings of what this would look like. We want to bring it forward to this body for your review and consideration before we get too far into it as part of your March 28th study session, so in, 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 in three, in three weeks. Just want to point out, if the council does decide to move forward with this enhanced scope, if you will, then it is likely that this project will not get underway until 2023. However, if you do not wish to move forward with this enhanced scope, then it is likely we'll be able to move forward with the turf in fields on the other four fields, on the, on just the four fields, you know, later, later this year. So again, just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up that that is going to be coming here in, in the next three weeks. Also, Pierce County is moving forward with updating their next 20-year plan for solid and hazardous waste management plan. And the, the timeline for that is, a draft has been prepared. It's making its way through the Pierce County Council. Long story short, the Pierce County Council is expected to take action on adopting the plan as part of their April 5th meeting, which means it's now out to cities and towns who are part of this plan and partners with the county on this for our review. And so we just got this last week, so we're in the process of reviewing it. We would like to bring this forward to the city council as part of your March 21st meeting to just provide you an overview and a review and any feedback and input. We anticipate providing to the county, but also allow this body an opportunity to do that as well. The deadline that the county has put in place to do that is March 25th. And so that's kind of where, where we are with the process. Once the, once the county council adopts it, then all the cities and towns in Pierce County will have, I believe it's, I believe it's three months or 90 days. It's either 60 or 90 days to then adopt the plan. And the city of Lakewood did this some 20 years, 20 odd years ago as well. So it's not something that's new. And then, once all the cities and towns have adopted it, it will be sent to the State Department of Ecology for their review and, and approval. So, but right now, our critical path item is getting our comments and feedback back to the county council in advance of their consideration as part of their April 5th meeting. I just wanted to echo the executive director of the Red Cross. They're having their hero's breakfast on Thursday morning. It's at 7:30, 7:30 to 9:00. It's also, you know, an opportunity for them to raise some funds. And if you can attend it virtually or even personally, you know, these events are always well, well worth it in terms of what they do in our community, but also the recognition that they provide to various folks who are going to be recognized for lifesaving awards. And so if you have an opportunity or you have the time, I would strongly recommend it. Lastly, I would like to go over the draft city council retreat agenda that we've provided to you. And I know it's been, it's a bit, it's been a bit of work in progress even over the weekend. And so maybe if I could just kind of walk through this for you. And you know, the purpose of this retreat is, you know, specifically to talk about homelessness and where this body wants to go as it relates to steps, actions, policies, systems that you want to put in place to address homelessness, not just in Lakewood, but also working, systems that you want to put in place to address homelessness, not just in Lakewood, but also working, you know, regionally with our regional partners, whether it's the county and other cities and towns as well. And so, you know, we'd like to kind of start off with a bit of an icebreaker. And, you know, this will be an opportunity for you to kind of think about this. You know, what does homeless look like to you and/or what words come to mind when you think of homelessness? I think we all have, I think if you were to do this within the community, you would find a wide range of feedback and input on this. So we want to spend some time with this body and, you know, see where you are, not just as a body, but also individually as it relates to homeless. The recommendation is then to transition into a bit of a primer in terms of, you know, homelessness in Lakewood, you know, kind of, you know, the size of the issue or the size of the problem, the people that are experiencing homelessness specifically in Lakewood. And we have some data that we'll be able to share with you, and again, just to kind of set the, set the tone and set the stage and the foundation. Next up, and this would be, a lot of this you're actually aware of because it's a, it's a review of our existing city programs that the city has in place as it relates to human services, housing, and homeless prevention. And, you know, you as a legislative body, you do an awful lot in that area. You know, it's something that has been part of this organization and community's DNA since incorporation in 1996. And quite frankly, it has just continued to grow, including in the last year, you know, whether it's partnering to provide an emergency shelter in partnership with Tacoma Pierce County and Aspen Court, or expanding our behavioral health contact team. So it's something that is regularly and continually on the forefront of the policies that you put in place. Also, as a part of that, you know, in terms of trying to frame, you know, the policy issue, it's really around, you know, prevention. So, you know, before it happens, diversion when it's happening, and then also intervention after it happens. And there are some areas within those three areas that we focus more in some of those areas than we do in some of the others. And again, I think that's a policy consideration for this body as you look out into the future in terms of any changes or opportunities you want to take advantage of. Next up is we have invited some guests to come in and talk with you about new opportunities. And one of the things I want to be clear on is that these are opportunities that are not yet in place, but are beginning to move forward for review and consideration. And one of them is Pierce County's Community First Village. And actually, the speaker there who will be talking about it will be the county's Director of Human Services, Heather Moss. And so she'll be here to talk about that. She will also be here to talk about the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness, including their goal to create a unified regional office to coordinate the whole issue of homelessness within the county. You know, it's, you know, the response to homelessness in the county, it's very, very fragmented across, you know, multiple jurisdictions, whether it's government, private sector, nonprofits, et cetera. And so the goal of this new regional office would be to try and coordinate, coordinate all of that. So she'll be here to talk about that. The Community First Village, by the way, the county is looking to acquire, I think it's about 15 or 20 acres to build upwards of 400. I guess you could define them as tiny homes. So not only would they provide emergency shelter, but there would be, now this is my term, wraparound services to those who are in need. So it's not just providing them a rooftop, but also the services to help them. Also, we have invited the CEO of the Tacoma Rescue Mission, Duke Paulson, to talk about their role. They're kind of the premier example of emergency shelter services here in Pierce County, and they do a wonderful job. As a matter of fact, this body, you provide funding to them on an annual basis. They too are looking at some new programs, including expanding their footprint and perhaps acquiring a motel elsewhere in Pierce County to further expand emergency shelter. And so again, this could be another opportunity for this body to participate in that as it moves forward. And then this evening, you know, you heard from LASSA and their leadership talking about what they have going on. And so we'll have our housing manager Jeff Gum and Tiffany Spear, our long-range planning manager, to kind of get into a little bit more detail about what they're thinking and things along those lines. And again, another way for this body to be able to partner. And of course, you know, they're providing a different solution than say what the rescue mission or what the county is providing. And then the other presentation is something that's new. It was just presented to the Pierce County Council. And it's a, it's an analysis, a gap analysis, as it relates to services and homelessness within Pierce County. It's quite lengthy. We will provide the full-length report to you. However, we have asked the publisher to kind of just focus on the key highlights of the report because apparently when it was presented to the county council, it took over two hours. And so we've asked them to kind of keep it to about 20 or 25 minutes or so. But it's got an incredible amount of just great information, and so that's our motivation of putting that on the agenda. And then, just like we started with this body in terms of, you know, where are you with homelessness? You know, kind of after hearing all of what's going on, what the city's doing, what opportunities might be available, things along those lines, then there'll be an opportunity for you folks just to have an open conversation. And, you know, what is it that you want to do as you look out into the near future? Also, you know, as you go back to the city programs that we currently have, are those the programs that you want to continue to undertake? Or do you want to, you know, redirect or reallocate those resources towards something different? Again, those are policy decisions that rest solely with this body. So we'll do our best to try and help facilitate that discussion, but it's really, you know, you've never done this before. So it's kind of hard to kind of anticipate what you may or may not want to do. So we want to try and keep it as open-ended as possible, not just in the beginning, but actually as we wrap this up. I would also define this retreat as really kind of just a first step as it relates to this body's endeavor of talking about homelessness in Lakewood as well as continuing to find solutions to address it. This is not going to, this is, you're not going to come up with a final solution at your meeting on Saturday. There'll definitely have to be some continued discussion, not just for the rest of this year, but as we continue out because homelessness is a tough issue and it's not something that's going away. But again, anything, you know, that we can do to help, you know, people in need, one person at a time, you know, makes, you know, makes it all worthwhile. So, and also, you know, the time of the retreat is from eight thirty to one thirty, but if you wanted to start earlier or go later, or if there's something that we're missing here or something else that you would like to include on the agenda, you know, mayor and council, please, you know, let me know. And what I'd like to do though is try and get some general direction from you this evening, if this is good to go, and/or with any changes or updates that you have, so we can move forward with finalizing and getting the agenda out to you. We also have a number of other reports I would like to include in the agenda, again, just purely background material so that you have it. And you can certainly read those at your convenience and pleasure. So with that, that's, that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. Coffield? Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, I appreciate the thought that went into framing an agenda for us, to be able to go and do that. I think you're exactly right that this is not a session where we're going to come up with concrete solutions and decisions to put things in place or even moving very quickly to them, but to be sure that we're, that the compendium of things that we do are connected in a, in a, in a way that is actually going to be making a difference in Lakewood, okay? And I appreciate the fact that Ms. Moss and Mr. Paulson and Mr. Dyke have been invited because they will, they will give us perspectives about both what is possible, but also what is being done around us that maybe we don't have to do ourselves, but that we should be supportive of. I would like for us to have that robust discussion and you know, the agenda as published sort of indicates 50 minutes, and I really would like that to be, I think we may want to take more time than that. And in addition to possibly extending the time of the retreat, I think one way to do that, that we could gain 20 minutes or half an hour, that I don't necessarily need, think that we need the presentation on LASSA's ARPA requests. I think we heard about them today, what their role is, what their vision is, what they're, what they're hoping to do. And I think going forward, those, we're going to get details about those ARPA requests when we actually are holding a study session and having meetings about the totality of the ARPA requests, because we got a list of about 11 or 12 that were, that were pending already. And I don't know that we will, that the, that that's necessarily what needs to fit into this and that we could gain a little bit of time for our own discussions to be able to go and do that. But I'm certainly happy that we're going to be, going to be doing that. And hopefully, we'll, we'll leave it with a, with a feeling that we both can and will be moving forward with, with that message to the community and also to know what we need to hear from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Branstad. Just a thought on the agenda as a follow-up to his comment. You know, I don't know how much time has been allocated to each of these sub-points, including the LASSA ARPA discussion, but perhaps there can be an overview at least on that as, you know, as well as something material to it. And I might suggest that we could use the lunch period, the 30 minutes to have kind of as a working lunch. And I assume Ms. Spear could kind of back up her comments and start during the lunch period. And then we'd have 50 plus 30 minutes potentially for a good, robust discussion as she leads us through that process on priority prioritization.
Certainly, Mayor. And by the way, that 50 minutes, actually, the way the math works out here should be 65. So, but we could certainly remove the LASSA item since you heard this evening from them. The reason we added it on here is because it fell under the realm of something that's new, that's happening in our own city. So that was our, but since you did receive an update of that this evening, you know, that could very easily be removed and again, free up some more time and, you know, maybe get you to an hour and a half or even more. Again, because I think the, I agree with Councilmember Branstad, you folks need to have some time, you know, after you hear all this stuff. You know, it's a really just chit chat about this and, you know, have a conversation. But we can make that happen for you. And if you want to have a working lunch, maybe just have a 15-minute break, and then that'll add another 15 minutes as well.
Absolutely. Does that work for everyone? More time is better?
Yeah.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, a quick comment.
Absolutely.
I don't want to get the LASSA information lost. I still would like it included because it is a part of one of the partnership opportunities. So maybe it's just not as in-depth as what you were possibly thinking.
Are we getting a little packet at all? It might have a little blurb on it or?
Something, just so it's in everything.
Yes. Matter of fact, Ms. Spear is pulling together a PowerPoint presentation to kind of facilitate all of this. And so there will be something in there to that effect. Yes.
Any other questions of Mr. Coffield? Does that conclude your report?
Actually, Mayor, we'll have lunch for you. And so, and then in the morning, we'll have some fruit and some coffee and some other things. And then as I normally do, I'm going to go to the finest doughnut shop here in Lakewood. And so if you have any requests, just let me know.
You must have hired another intern to do your, your good work.
I do, I do that. I do that myself, Mayor.
All right. Very good. Any else? Is that it for Mr. Coffield? Going once, going twice? Okay. Then let's turn to city council comments. And before we go there, well, I guess I can reserve it for mine, but I wanted to address one of the public comments, or two of the public comments on the issue of the tree moratoria pending the ad hoc tree committee's work. And I didn't want to speak out of turn in my apparently very pointed response to a public commenter. But given the feedback and overview we've received from the city attorney, I believe not once, but perhaps twice, I want to just ask again, is there any consensus by this council to have the city attorney or the city manager review and raise the issue of a moratoria on the tree ordinance prior to the completion of the ad hoc tree committee's recommendations and work? I'll ask again for the benefit of the public commenters, so I'm not too turd in my response or curt in my response. Is there any consensus of this council to raise the issue of a moratoria for consideration at a later city council meeting? Thank you. I think that puts it to rest. I'll now ask Mr. Boki to present whatever comments he may have.
I was cranky earlier, so I was going to have all sorts of comments about different things, about writing letters. But instead, I'm going to hold my remarks for, and wait to see how things transpire on the masking. And as things hopefully kind of get back to normal. And also kind of waiting on what the legislature is going to do or not do and kind of inform our decisions going forward. But glad to be back in person. Usually chambers are about 55 degrees because the city manager is so thrifty. But it's, it's a, you know, it's about 67 in here tonight, so it's comfortable. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Boki? Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the temperature in here is great, so thank you. I just wanted to love the presentation from LASSA today, so I found that very informative and that they have a lot of really exciting things happening. And I'm looking forward to the council retreat on Saturday. So, and getting back to normal, it's great being back in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstad?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I am glad that the legislative session is winding down and looks like it's not going to be extended and that things move forward. The last really significant thing to be, I think, accomplished has to do with the, whether there's going to be a transportation package approved and what, what, what in it is going to be there for local jurisdictions as opposed to things over there? I know that there is the the problem of where some money needed to be found and they want to take it from the Public Works Trust Fund over the next 16 years, which is problematic, but I'm hopefully that that will be, be worked out. I think that there were some good actions already approved and already signed by the governor with relating to public safety. And that, just like with the measures that took place a year ago, now we'll have to see how these changes, what that affects is happening on the streets of our community and in the morale of our police department and in how effective we're able to adapt to the new rules that are sort of changed back in the, in the direction, although not completely. So that's interesting. I think it's, I'm also glad that some of the bills that we're going to look to usurp local authority in areas such as zoning and that, while they reappeared this session, aren't making it through, and they're not going to be passed this time. But I think that we as a council need to recognize that until cities such as Lakewood begin to show that we can make those individual nuances and do positive things towards zoning that will promote housing that fits us, we're going to continue to see the legislature thinking, well, we just need to place some sort of bank of solution. So I think that as we get ready looking forward and as we look for our So I think that as we get ready, looking forward and as we look for our future comprehensive plan dockets, we should do some thinking about what can we do to be ahead of it and demonstrate that cities can be the proactive element in this that's closest to people as opposed to just worrying about what the legislature will do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I wouldn't be surprised if some of that's part of our discussion at the retreat a little bit in terms of priorities and potential solutions on the housing issue. So thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, since I forgot to do a public disclosure for this state financial.
You mean the F1?
F1.
Shouldn't be due until April 15th, I believe.
Right, but I forgot it. So I'm just bringing it to the foreman of everybody.
Thank you.
I did attend the Lakewood Promise Meeting on last Thursday. And Hank Jones is phenomenal. He is, if it's something that we can come up with to reward him for his behavior and his attributes and articulation of the things, I would like to see that happen. He gave a thorough review on mental health and how it's affecting the students. And he was, it was just unbelievable, better than some professionals that are being paid to do those things. So, yeah, and I too am looking forward to our retreat on Saturday. I think this, if I'm looking at the agenda, it's going to be a good discussion. A lot of interaction, a lot of fun. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And I just have a few comments. I, speaking of Mr. Jones, I had the chance to welcome the ad hoc tree committee during their initial meeting this last week. And as part of the overview, each one got a chance to introduce themselves and what each of them hoped to obtain by way of a personal outcome and what their interest was in serving. It was fantastic. And everyone had a very well-thought-out reason for being there. And that kind of public service and volunteerism is to be applauded. And I hope that at the end of that process, folks will realize it was a very thorough, very intentional, well-thought-out process. So I want to thank those of you who served on the subcommittee of the council to call through the 39 or 37 really good applications. They were all quite good. And to, to bring to table the, what is it, 11 or 13 that we have on the subcommittee? So good work on that. Great people, including Mr. Jones. He was very articulate in his presentation during the ad hoc tree committee opening meeting. So, yep. I attended the SHAPE work group. That's the Housing Affordability Partnership Group that our council member Farmer is the appointed person. She was out, so I attended that on Friday. They have done a good job of articulating their final sort of work plan and that should be presented to us soon for review. But I was again impressed by the scope and, and good thorough work that they're doing to date. They do have an executive director that they've appointed, that the board has appointed. And I think the process, Mr. Coffield can correct me, but I think the board, the appointed board from the municipal members has selected the executive director. I don't think there needs to be confirmation. I think that person is selected, but I could be wrong on that.
That's my understanding, Mayor, is that the SHAPE board appoints that person.
Yep. Yes. Oh, it's, it's, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you for leading me, leading me along here. Jason, Jason Gautier, Gautier. I want to say Gautier, but it's Gautier, Gautier. And he is from Habitat for Humanity. He has been their policy director, I think, for a number of years now. In that capacity, does a lot of policy work on behalf of Habitat and is well-known to the community and is very excited about digging in and serving on that, on that board. So I, I look forward to working with him. He'll be great. I have a meeting this week on Wednesday, Mr. Coffield, with Mike Griffiths, the CEO of Pierce Transit. And so if there's anything other than BRT2 and your desires and our collective desires on where that will be routed to bring to his attention, if there's anything else other than that, I'll be happy to do so at my monthly meeting with him.
Let me touch base with you because I think it's this week, I believe we're meeting with him and his team on BRT2. So I can give you an update on the outcome of that in terms of whether or not they are going to understand our policy as it relates to BRT2.
Very good. And then other than addressing some of the public comments, in, in our hope is to address constructive public comments so that we can actually take action on problems and work on solutions for the community. There were a couple of comments on emergency management services that might deserve some additional thought by us. And one thought that comes to mind by me is in any time of uncertainty when folks are concerned about natural disasters or otherwise, as was articulated, there may be some value in, again, putting something on our website or pushing out in public information how folks can avail themselves of the county's emergency management response. I think there's a, an app or a, an email or a text opportunity. So if people want to have more active, live, responsive information, they can certainly avail themselves of that. So.
We just launched Code Red, Mayor, and we've had a number of people sign up for that. So that's, that's.
And that was in the Connections Magazine as well, the Code Red.
That's, that's correct.
So it might be good to just, I know we're doing what we can, but it's always good to provide more and better information because I can see how people can be concerned about current events.
Also, the imminent threat that we're receiving through our channels is cybersecurity. And so that's something internally we're going to be taking a look at. And certainly everybody should be aware of that. My, my, my simple ask of my staff has been, you know, rather than sending emails, use this as an opportunity to pick up the phone and call somebody or meet in person with them and things like that. Because you just don't know what's coming across your emails these days and including social media. And you don't know what you're going to click or what it's going to do. So we just all need to be cognitive of that. But that's the biggest threat right now. And the number one threat that came out this afternoon is actually New York is, the target is New York City. So.
New York City?
New York City. That's correct.
Interesting. Well, it's a time to be vigilant. And so I do appreciate those comments. And on the Code Red piece, I'll look forward to making sure that that's out there in the ether a little bit more broadly disseminated for the public at large. So unless there are any other thoughts or comments by the group, this meeting is adjourned.